Please be seated. Can I ask the Commissioner of the Council to allow the palantirists to display the proceedings at the meeting on the two large screens in the chamber? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
On declarations of interest, can I remind members that you are going to be required to declare meetings to any disposable community or prejudicial interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber in consideration of that title. Are there any such declarations, please? Now, can I ask if the minutes of the extraordinary City Council meeting held on 8th of April 2015 and the City Council meeting held on 8th of April 2015 are over? Lord Mayor, can I follow the report? The 2015 London election results are set out on pages 22 to 31 of the agenda.
Could I... Did I make it right up there? Can I extend the warm welcome to all our new councillors and to those members who have been re-elected for the further term? Congratulations to you all! Well done, you've all worked very hard and welcome to Liverpool City Council. Thank you.
Lord Mayor, item six, can I move the following? And to advise councils where the appointment of councillor Anne O'Bea as deputy mayor, councillors Wendy Simon and Nick Small as assistant mayors, and the names of the cabinet members and their responsibilities, together with the details of assistant cabinet members, are set out in Appendix 1 to this note. And also be noted that the cabinet members' responsibilities are to be reviewed and upraised in light of the proposed changes, and this will be reported to members in due course when we have those details. Lord Mayor, I just want to make a couple of comments before we move on to the next item. And it's really about the elections and also about the challenges that we face as a city. I've made changes to the cabinet to reflect the serious challenges that we face as a city. And I've no doubt that people, some people in this chamber, will turn a blind eye to the real problems that we're going to face, not only this year but also next year. I've talked repeatedly about the problems that we face in terms of 2017, when our finances will only allow us to actually pay for our statutory responsibilities. The fact of the matter is, is that the Greens' speech today, for those that paid attention to it, confirms exactly what it is that we all fear, that there is no light at the end of the tunnel, there is no desire from this administration to look at local government finance and to change its course of direction. Indeed, for some of the poorest within this city and some of the most disadvantaged, things are undoubtedly heading for a worst period of time for them, I think unprecedented really, in the history of our city. In talking to the group last night, I reflected on my times as a young lad, similar to yours, Tony, brought up in poverty within the city centre and relying so much so on services provided by the state and by the council. Unfortunately, that is not going to be the case for many people in this city. And as I said, indeed, things will actually get worse if we look at the proposed housing changes and the government's stance in terms of allowing the people that live in RSLs, social landlord houses, to buy those properties. That's going to have a huge detrimental impact on their ability to build more houses. And that means that the city will have to look at what it does in terms of supporting those providers or even looking at ourselves, how we engage with other partners to build more accommodation for them. The city, as you know, has no council house on its books, but we need to address the real problems that people within our city face. There are, for instance, people who are in receipt of housing benefits, young people. Peter Mitchell, who is here, talked about this last night and the challenges that they will face as their benefits are taken away from them because they are under the age of 21. Where do we go? Who's going to accommodate them? Who's going to look after them? And of course, we've got the bedroom tax and the problems that that causes. And then we've got the massive adult social care funding reductions to come. And I speak about this on a regular basis, and Mr Mitchell, apologies for saying it again, how we've gone from £224 million in 2010 down to £172 million now. And we've got to get that figure down to £132 million within the next two years. And we made the decision the other day to actually increase the fees that we pay to the private providers of accommodation for people in the city, physically and called in by the Greens, of course. And the naivety is beyond belief, because they're actually talking about, you know, the living wage. This party over here introduced the living wage in this council and want to see everybody spend it, but we simply haven't got that money. But my challenge to you, councillor Coyle, is that every opportunity you raise, call, call, call. Not very much difference. What my challenge to you will be is to explain where that funding and that money is going to come from within the council, of course. You know, we've seen, by the way, in the local elections, the Greens' say it's become a Green's pledge. As the Labour Party in Liverpool took just under 66% of the vote, stopping the Greens' sales and reducing the Liberals and the Liberal Democrats to double acts within the council, we're hugely humbled by the support of the people of this city, hugely humbled. But I know, I know in my heart, that they actually believe that the issues that we're tackling are there in the heart and the way they do it. Unfortunately, no, councillor Coyle recalls, you have to wait until you become there in order to give that particular opportunity. But for me, you know, I say this, I know that we have the next two years to change the way we do things. That's why in the cabinet restructure, Jane Corporates told me how we bring in partners within our city under the social inclusion and equality agenda, how we bring in partners across the city in the voluntary sector, in the faint sectors, and all the sectors, including the private sector, to tackle the inequality and unfairness that will be dealt to us and therefore dealt to the people of the city. And that's the challenge that we face. It's not something that I relish, it's not something I look forward to. But one thing I do know, Lord Mayor, I really do know, is that the Labour Group is on its own when it comes to dealing with those issues that face us. I hope, I hope that there is an acceptance by these political parties, and including now that councillor Kemp has no longer retired to any coalitions to things nationally, that they engage in a constructive and positive way in actually helping us solve and deal with the problems of this city and the people of this city in terms of what they face. So for me, our changes in cabinet reflect that, the way we will set about trying to mitigate the damages, because like amongst everybody in this city, we hope that there wouldn't be a return of a Conservative government. And we certainly, if we believe that we're going to get one, hope that it wouldn't be with a majority to able to carry out some of those things, because there will be no restrictions on what they're able to do. But make no mistake about it, you know, people criticised me after the election for saying that our city faces a serious, serious few years ahead of it. We do, we really do. For other days and for other times, we will talk about the success that our city is having in terms of growth and the economy and the employment jobs. That is undoubtedly true, as we see the figures for ourselves, and that is despite the Tory government that we've been able to do those things, and will continue to do more of the same. So congratulations to the Labour Party here in the city of Liverpool, to the team for working so hard to keep that relationship and that contact with the people of this city, because it was them that retained us to office with an even bigger majority than we had the year before and the year before that. So we will not let them down, we will do everything we can to stand shoulder to shoulder with them, to try to protect as much as we can. And that includes doing things differently and working, as I said, with our partners to make a real difference to the people. So the notes and the changes that we've made, I believe, are in the best interest of the city, and that's why I've made them.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Item seven, constitutional issues.
Excuse me, do I get a right of reply, having been named?
No. Move on to item seven. Councillor Allan Dean.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Coombe's not here to respond. Before I go, Miss Lord Mayor, can I offer my congratulations as well as to your success and to the honourable members, along with that. On item seven of constitutional issues, 2015-16, can I move the recommendations set out in the report to be submitted, be approved in respect of a) responsibility functions for 2015-16 and is given delegation for the same period; b) review proportions standing orders 2015-16 and financial breaks for the same period; and c) contract standing orders for 2015-16.
Is that agreed? Want to ask a question?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I would naturally be asking this question if I was confident that we've had the ought for the next thousand years. We won't, unfortunately, we won't have someone with integrity, I suspect, next time trying to say, because some of the pressures that will come to various... I just came across the... did this quite late, and I asked for further information with regard to item 2 to bottom of five, v. It's also been noted that proposals may come forward following a recent consultation exercise regarding executive functions. And I mean, as a Christian, I'm kind of moved by the Holy Spirit sometimes, funnily enough, sometimes despite my jokes, and for some reason, an old joke came into my head when I read this, and it was of a man standing in a shop front with a dog, and a pedestrian walks past and says, "Is your dog bite?" And the man says, "No." And the man bends down, and the dog takes two of his fingers off, and the man says, "I thought your dog didn't bite." And the man said, "That's not my dog." Now, that's what I think this is, that we're missing. This is something which ostensibly doesn't look like it could bite, but it has the potential to rip the very heart out of the democratic...
Councillor Cummins, I mean, you were going to ask a question, this is a statement, really.
I'd like to know who, how many members were aware at the DCLG were consulting on powers of this magnitude which would move effectively, rent the City Council be done as moving...
Councillor Cummins, could you just sit down? I'm going to get the chief executive to respond.
Well, thank you, Lord Mayor. Just not to cut across councillor Cummins, but the simplest answer to the question... Sorry, chamber, is that better? Thank you. Not to cut across councillor Cummins' question, but in the interest of timescale and so on, I think the simplest answer to the point that you wish to put is that this is coming back to the next ordinary meeting of the council. So all councillors are being given the opportunity to comment on the consultation from CLG that you're referring to, and nothing will happen on it until it comes back to the City Council.
Thank you, Chief Executive. So the consultation...
Councillor Cummins, you've had your response now, but you please sit down. Councillor Cummins, you'll have a further opportunity at the next full council, as the chief executive has just explained, so we're going to move on now, so... Is that agreed? Councillor Dean?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Oh, before you start, can I just say that, can we take agenda items eight and nine, all supporting reports relating to these items, be taken together? Is that agreed?
You've obviously got a tip for mine, Mr Mayor. Can I move, I'm going to move this as I've got them just at the feet together, if that's okay, because this is the way I was given it. Can I move the appointment of seven select committees for the municipal year 2015-16 that's set out in Appendix 2 to this note, and that the terms of reference for select committees be circulated for reference to group leaders and submitted for the first meeting, which committees be approved? I'm assuming you want to go to the next one. Political proportions, can I move that, one, the political proportions of committees and the allocation of seats that's set out in Appendix 3 to this note be approved? The proposed appointment of chairs of committees is circulated, be approved? The deputy chairs of the committees to be appointed at the first meeting of each committee and reported to the next meeting of City Council? Or for the seats not allocated to members, the names be proposed to the committee members services or outlets designated for groups, be reported to the chief exec in writing at whatever meeting is effect whilst they're submitting? And can I just add to that, there was a vacancy identified on planning, that would be taken by council board house? Thank you.
There's an amendment received from councillor Steve Bradford. Attached as Appendix 3 to this note. Is the amendment seconded?
I don't want to make a great debate of it. Last year, the Labour Party group did participate in the budget, where the party are involved in constructive debate, I regret councillor Anderson suggesting only the Labour group would vote for a good policy in the city constructively. However, one of the differences of opinion we have genuinely is on the regeneration committee, it's had some incredibly large agendas and, going to be honest, dealing with all issues of regeneration, some of the big infrastructure projects, and not having a separate housing committee, I think has missed us the ability to look at some of the details that would be helpful. When we moved the amendments that there's see a separate housing committee at the last council, Mayor Anderson said that housing was going to be dealt with at the mayoral scrutiny committee because it was such a key mayoral objective. And I understand that point of view, even though I didn't accept it. Well, we don't have a mayoral subcommittee, we don't have a mayoral scrutiny committee this year, but we will have a regeneration committee, we have a regeneration cabinet member and a housing cabinet member. And I just think it makes total sense to have a committee for those big portfolios, so that often, some of the problems in the city have arisen because of often minor issues over how a policy is interpreted in a locality rather than the bigger structures. So I wish to move, and we wish to re-establish the housing committee, I think it's totally coherent to what the mayor said last year, it's totally coherent to the size of the agendas that the combined committees had to deal with. I think it would give people greater focus and it would reflect the cabinet structure as well. And in light of the mayoral scrutiny committee won't be there to deal with this, I think that even compounds the issue why it should be needed and why it be appropriate.
Lord Mayor, can we just move straight opposition to that amendment?
Are there any other speakers? Can we move to the vote, please? All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Is there any abstentions? Voting for the amendment 2, against 80, no abstentions, the amendment falls. Before we go on to the main motion, can I just remind members that, as indicated in the report, that the supplementary agenda, in order to suspend proportionality for the committees listed out, all members present must vote in favour with no dissenting voices, this being to comply with the requirements of section 17, Stro 1, the Local Government and Housing Act 1918, and if there are any members dissenting, then proportionality rules are applied to those committees. Is the recommendation in relation to political proportions and allocations of seats agreed? Councillor Dean, again?
Item 10, giving members allowances, Lord Mayor, for 2015-16, can I move that, one, if you notice that this is the sixth successive year that there's been no uplift in the basic allowance payment to members? Two, in respect of childcare and dependent allowance provision, that this is to be approved in principle, with the payment being determined to reflect the hourly rate of pay in line with the current living wage level, and the recommendations are submitted to the next ordinary council meeting in July, follow the brief review of the period where the constitute the relevant approved duty for purposes of attracting additional payments and entitlements. And all members be requested to submit any additional views relating to the childcare and dependent provision during the course of the next meeting cycle. Three, subjectively above the revisions at the allowance scheme be approved.
Okay. There's an amendment received from councillor Steve Bradford, attached as Appendix 4 to this note. Is the amendment... Is the amendment seconded?
Lord Mayor, I think I'll make the points I shared at the Constitutional Issues Committee, and I've now shared, I think, at least three times, if not four times, before the independent panel. When I look at the relative pay rates, recognising the responsibility work, it strikes me, I think, that relatively, the amount of monies we pay for ward members, the comprehensive duties they love to take, is undervalued. If you look at the pay rates for cabinet members, I think that is undervalued, since it's significant, because the responsibilities and decision-making they have to take. However, I think in comparison to those rates, the midpoint pick for committee chairman, I consider, having done that, I think are actually excessive to the extra work load a chairman needs to take compared to that of the cabinet member or the members of that committee. Certainly, I have been disappointed by the lack of communication from not all, but the majority of mayoral leads, when they have actions in my own ward and in issues that you would have thought we would have been consulted upon. And I have not seen to the larger degree a significant accountability tracking back for mayoral leads. Therefore, I move the amendment in some ways out of frustration, because representations to the independent panel have been taken on, and if we approve something I think was not inherently fair and equitable to the level of work that I think it would be hypocritical. So I move this with a heavy heart. Can I just add one other comment? We certainly did have a very constructive debate over childcare facilities, and suggested that we would support opinions where it was for formal duties of committee natures rather than ad hoc events, if I may use that performance committee meetings. That would, I think, would be protection from people being accused of an open system. And I think there was a need, and I think in debate it was referred to, that there is a real need to look at not just childcare, but other carers allowances as well, and how the members made the point. The last comment I can make, Chair, I think the independent panel has the disadvantage, and I don't say that with any disrespect to the intention or the value of the members, that we don't have, as far as I know and not been aware of, and if I'm corrected, I'd be absolutely pleased to hear it, I think that the disadvantage, I think there would be a real benefit of including some people who have served as senior councillors in different roles, who may no longer be councillors and perceived to have a vested interest, being on the panel and bringing the experience from inside rather than just receiving reports. And I think that would strengthen the panel's ability to arbitrate comparative rates. So I move the amendment with a degree of reluctance, but I just feel so frustrated that the views with input have not been agreed and not been recognised, and do so with, you know, a degree of humility, but I'd also ask maybe some of the good consideration. We do have quite a few former councillors who've served a lot of different roles, and I think one of the former councillors sitting on the panel would actually add value to the panel's ability to arbitrate some of those differentials.
Okay. Before I begin, councillor Dean, and is there any further speakers? Do you want councillor Dean?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Again, straight opposition to this, this is something that the panel have looked at and have already given a commitment to, members that they will review all of the things the council has identified. We share some of the concerns and some of the issues that are undertaken to review that fully during the next period, and I'm confident that they'll come up with a solution or a recommendation of the council, probably a top, some straight opposition again.
Okay, can we go to the vote? All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Is there any abstentions? Voting for the amendment 6, against 75, no abstentions, the amendment is lost. Is there a substantial motion? All those in favour then? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I move the schedule of dates as in the appendices for 2015-16 and 16-17 be approved? And any subsequent proposed changes to the schedule of dates? And any subsequent proposed changes to the schedule of dates for 2015-16 be considered by the WIF meeting following consultation with the oral members?
Agreed?
Agreed.
Item twelve?
In terms of appointments in Merseyside Joint Authorities, Lord Mayor, can I move fire authority, fire rescue service, councillors Peter Brennan, Roy Gordon, Dave Van Hattie, Barbara Murray, James Robertson, Sharon Solomon; two, for Merseyside Combined Authority, councillors Dan Brannington, Mark Norris, Mary Rasmussen, Liam Robinson, Pam Thomas and Jeremy Wilson; for Merseyside Recycling and Mice Authority, yourself, Lord Mayor, councillors Laura Roberts and Collins and Andrew Foxley; and for the Police and Crime Panel, in accordance with the legislation, councillor, sorry, Mayor Anderson will be confirmed as an automatic appointment in the city, on behalf of the city, and also appointed councillors Enno and Emily Spurle.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Councillor Dean?
Appointments at the LGA General Assembly, the vote will be cast by Mayor Anderson, will be three votes, councillors Anno Byrne, two votes, councillor Wendy Simon, two votes, and councillor Nick Small, two votes.
Okay. Councillor Dean again.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I move that the appointments to outside bodies be deferred for the next meeting of the City Council in view of the cabinet's member changes that have been approved today by the mayor and the current arrangement continuing to otherwise agree by council?
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Councillor Dean again?
Combined Authority, Lord Mayor, can I move that Mayor Anderson will be appointed as the City Council representative on the city region, with the councillor Anno Byrne Deputy Mayor resulting in it, and the councillor Patrick Kearney be appointed to the Combined Authority scrutiny panel as both a member and the authority's scrutiny link, and the second name will come later, Lord Mayor.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Item eighteen, councillor Dean?
Lord Mayor, can I recommend that the overview and scrutiny selecting this in scrutiny annual report for 2014-15 is set out in append pages one seven eight to two one four and the council agenda be approved? And can I just say, Lord Mayor, before that's approved, some criticism has been levelled at the authority over recent months about our level of scrutiny, our effective level of scrutiny. Particular comments have been made and referred to the decision to scrap the mayoral select overview and scrutiny. We took the decision to do that purely and simply because those committees weren't doing what they were supposed to do. Overview and scrutiny was a committee that we've now made, a briefing session with myself and the chairs of the select committees, if that's what we do, we review how the committees have operated, anything that needs to be tinkered with or changed or improvements that can be made, it's not really a scrutiny committee, it's a review process. But in relation to the mayoral select committee, I was astounded to see the comments made by councillor Kemp in the media over that issue. We deliberately set that committee up on the Mayor Anderson's instruction so that he could be scrutinised. The first two years, it was clear he wasn't being scrutinised properly. So he instructed me last year to change the constitution of that committee, to make the opposition the lead groups. And the constitution of mayoral select matched here with seven opposition and five Labour. They had every opportunity to hold the mayor to task, to challenge him, to bring stuff forward, to be discussed and considered and scrutinised. They failed miserably to do that. He wants to be scrutinised, he's not like everybody else. He relishes being scrutinised. He gave them the opportunity, said, "Here's the committee, you're in charge of it, you've got the votes, you scrutinise me." And councillor Kemp's response was to attend the first three and not the last four. So the scrutiny was there and to use the old adage, Lord Mayor, you can take a councillor to scrutiny, but you can't make him do it. And they choose, they chose to fail their electorate by not scrutinising the mayor properly. And if they choose not to do that, we're not going to have a committee where someone gets paid just to sit there going through the motions every six weeks. That's why we scrapped it and moved those things, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Question, councillor Alfred, or a comment?
Well, I could make a comment, but I'll have to make it into a question. When you say the opposition failed to scrutinise, can you consider why you believe the Liberal Group failed to scrutinise? Because you said the opposition in a plural sense. I take exception to that because I remember us quite often asking questions. The fact we don't necessarily disagree in the conclusions doesn't mean there was a lack of scrutiny. I think that comments are not appropriate to all the opposition parties and I take exception to that. In respect, can I say a positive point, Chair, and I think it is useful, my Lord Mayor, is I certainly do think the overview and scrutiny committee have been very predatory about processes and not adding value. And we would support the removal of that committee. I don't think it's added value over the years, might say that not just this administration, previous administrations. In respect of the mayoral scrutiny committee, it might have been more critical of the fact that we've had a compensatory move by the increase in obligations on the select committees and I think that is a proportionate balance. So I'm not trying to be critical, but certainly I don't think the comments certainly would be true of the Liberal Group and in fact including the Budget Working Party as well.
Councillor Dean is quite happy to amend what I said, Lord Mayor. It was a generic opposition. But it's quite clear that the opportunity was there for all opposition parties to scrutinise the activities and the role that the mayor carries out on this city's behalf and that committee wasn't doing that, pure and simple, and that's why we decided to get rid of it. You know, we're very keen to save money in the authority and keen to make sure that every opportunity is given to people to scrutinise, select committee chairs, cabinet members, wherever. And indeed, the mayor's already indicated that he will have a public question summit here, three times a year, in places the mayoral select, when all opposition parties can have half an hour to ask him questions about things he's done or hasn't done in the past and I'm sure he adequately answers and responds to those comments. But the opportunity was there, it wasn't taken and why should we have something, as members of this chamber are always saying to us, we've got committees that aren't doing anything. We recognise we gave the committee to the opposition, they didn't do the right thing with it, so we scrapped it. And I accept what councillor Alfred says, it may not always been their issue, but there was an opportunity for members to bring things forward collectively to scrutinise the mayor and they didn't do that, so we scrapped it and that's what we've done. I'm grateful for councillor Alfred's comments in relation to overview and scrutiny because we were concerned about the reality of what was happening, it wasn't beneficial to councillors' working. It certainly wasn't a select committee and that's why we abolished it. And again, I thank him for the comment about the proportionality, we didn't have to do that. But if you remember, and I'll use his name correctly this time, the then councillor coin was always saying to us, "We don't get an opportunity to ask things, we don't get an opportunity to be involved." So I've given them the opportunity by putting two members of the opposition, minimum, on every select committee and that is there for them to take up. We will be watching very, very carefully, every select committee meeting, how that opportunity is taken up. But I do need to stress, Lord Mayor, that we've made the opportunity available. It was interesting, again, that one member of the committee went and raised and said, "Oh, we don't really want that, we should be out in the community working." He should have thought about that four years ago and otherwise he wouldn't have just him and his wife as elected members on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Party. But we've given them the opportunity, they can now do things more constructively in opposition on every select committee. We've reduced our numbers so the numbers aren't overwhelming, we couldn't take it any lower than we have, but the opportunity is there for all opposition parties to take part fully and adequately and scrutiny.
Councillor Crowe?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In terms of the mayoral select committee, we haven't actually been very critical of it being scrapped. We're on record as saying that some of the committees, or maybe even all, should go because they haven't been that effective. Does councillor Dean think that the mayoral committee might have been more effective if when members did submit questions on specific issues, that they wanted to know answers from the mayor? If they'd actually got straight answers rather than just being sort of batted back as if it wasn't a serious question? And that, you know, that could have been a factor that just motivated councillors to take part in my job.
Given that I am a person for scrutiny, I'd give you indulgence because it's a question that merely in fairness councillor Dean can't answer, but I can. I think probably if we look at the number of questions that were asked of the mayoral select committee, there may well probably have been somewhere around about sixteen hundred questions. I think fifteen hundred and forty of them come from you about bus lanes. That is not effective scrutiny, that is child politics. The fact of the matter is, the reason why we have a mayoral select committee, the only mayoral select committee in the whole country, set up by me for scrutiny, was to have proper scrutiny. The fact of the matter is, because you don't get what you want, doesn't mean to say that scrutiny's not working. The reality is, all of the select committees are scrutiny. This council, this council under my leadership, has had more scrutiny of its decisions than any other administration in the history of this council, including the Liberal Democrats. It was a bit of an insult for you to turn around and say that we didn't get straight answers. You got straight answers. You might like them, but they're the answers because it's called the real world.
Obviously, that is an interesting debate and I'm sure we'll have more discussions like that in the future. Can we agree that last, real world, yeah, okay. Hi, thank you all for attending and I hope you're safe for the conference. Thank you.